...advised of open session meeting attendees as follows. Open session, public meetings are subject to being videotaped and re-armed. Your image and voice may be recorded. Okay, we have a petition. Our applicant is Sawyer Hill condominium trust of 100 Village Court, and they're requesting a modification attendant to their chapter body for comprehensive permit. The floor is yours. Oh, I'm sorry, yeah. Do you have all of your, um...
(inaudible).
Yes. Right down the end of the table if you would please. Thank you, Leon. If all of you are aware, I think we're probably labeled. And except for Amy at the end of the table, she is town council. Sorry to hold you up, folks, but we're just waiting. Leon has to verify that. So the new state of publication is only one time in the newspaper. I think... All right, as long as the date that you have is two weeks prior to the bill. If she hasn't built for a second, I'll say that's fine. Okay, if you would introduce yourself, I'll declare the hearing open. Everything looks to be in order, does it?
Yes, okay.
And I'll declare the hearing open, and I'll give you an opportunity to make your presentation.
Okay. I'm Virginia Mackey, I'm one of the Sawyer Hill trustees. Do you also have other Sawyer Hill trustees present?
Ross Harpersus.
Oh, Ross. So I have five out of the six trustees. I did receive an email requesting that we bring copies of the bylaws. So I do have those for both Sawyer Hill and for Camelot. And I got extra copies in case people wanted to see those. Is there a process for getting those in?
If you start at the end of the table, I'm sure we'll be fine.
Okay.
Leon, make sure you get a copy in.
I made eleven total, and then these are becoming mine ones. And then I also have...
But not mosaic, right?
It does not include mosaic, so I could certainly do that, but they're very similar to Camelot's. I also have a letter from DHCD where it talks about they typically defer to the local zoning law in matters of this sort of nature. So, you know, as it pertains to their inventory, I don't know, so...
It'd be a shame if you copied all of those and we didn't look at them.
And then the only other thing I have is one of the others was unable to attend. A person, and she wanted to show her support, so she...
Okay, if you could, that's what we have, please. Could you just make note, we received it?
Okay. Okay. I'm not sure exactly what to talk about.
Okay, well, you just need to tell us what you're looking for.
Okay. So right now, all we're looking to do is to be able to increase the bedroom count. We're looking to increase it by one. I know there wasn't a number specified, and we noticed that one out, but we're looking to increase it by one. And the ultimate purpose for that is so that one of the units in Camelot can have an in-law apartment, so that an elderly parent can be a residence there.
Just for reference, do you know which...
Yeah, it's actually our unit. It's number 51.
I guess you know your own address, okay.
Yeah.
Is there anything else that you'd like to present to us before we ask questions?
Nothing I can think of. I mean, I think we detailed everything pretty clearly in the application. So there was some concern about the groundwater discharge permit.
Yes.
The application did have a statement from the Sawyer Hill trustees saying that the permit was in, was, the request had been sent into DEP. I'm actually gonna let DeP talk about that, because he's familiar with just that.
We've sent a current modification request to the DEP asking them to increase the bedroom count by one. We're not asking them to increase the discharge limit or any other changes to it. Literally just increase the bedroom count for 158. So that's filed with the DEP. They'll take their own time and deal with it.
What is your status with DEP right now?
We're in good standing. Yeah, we have a current permit that's active. There's no AOCs or anything on it.
Unfortunately, the member from the Board of Health was unable to attend, but the Board of Health did size to supply a couple of letters of noncompliance. Are you familiar with the letters of noncompliance?
So for the past two months, or monthly discharge reports have exceeded the front limits. We're in the middle of replacing some of the logic controllers in the pump house. There were one...
Well, these went back over a year.
Yeah.
Oh, ones from years ago are long since taken care of.
2018. Could I just ask you, how many incidents have there been where there's been a question on the part of DEP?
On the deep river last month, there's been several years since we had a near-sun device.
But you've been there like, it's been there 10 years, has it?
Yeah.
How many times has DEP intervened or given you noncompliance?
I would indicate that it has been more than once, but nothing in the past year.
Did you receive a note from us saying that you needed to bring a letter from DEP stating that they are in agreement with adding to the bedroom count?
I did. I understood that from the email to mean that it was gonna be contingent upon DEP supplying the permit. I didn't remember reading that you wanted us a letter stating that...
I'm sorry. So is it that you're asking that we grant this permit subject to? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah. We don't expect, I mean, basically, we don't expect you guys to agree to this unless DEP agrees to this, right? We did talk to the building inspector, or, sorry, the interim building inspector, and he did suggest that sometimes the DEP process can take a while. He also noted that sometimes a ZVA process can take a while. And in order to conserve time, he thought doing a parallel process would be acceptable. So to be able to have both applications moving forward simultaneously, he suggested that we include the note that our request would be contingent upon DEP's approval of the amendment.
Well, my colleagues can chide in or correct me if they think I'm wrong, and we do oftentimes do some things. Even when you first got your permit, it would be subject to what happened. It wasn't built, it wasn't operating, you know, things can happen, so some flexibility is needed. But this, this whole request hinges on one sole thing, and that is increasing the number of bedrooms. And it solely hinges, well, it doesn't solely, the board still has to make a decision, but I can't see the board making a decision without DEP saying that you're in compliance.
My understanding, I don't know if you have anything official or in writing, but my understanding is that our discharge is well below the limits, and we didn't expect that DEP would have an issue. And they didn't think that they were gonna have a problem with granting it.
So we're currently permitted for $21,000 per gallon a day. Depending on the season, we are averaging $4,000 a thousand a month. So we are nowhere near like permitting levels.
No, but the item that we saw had to do with what's being discharged, an excess of nitrogen and some other things.
Okay. Yeah, I think part of the concern is, one of the documents that was forwarded to us was a notice of noncompliance, which is dated February 28th. Apparently, the test was done...
In 18.
To show you how up-to-date DEP is, the test was done in July of 2018. They got around to sending this in February of 2019, saying that your nitrate levels were too high. So it's not necessarily the amount of effluent, it's the chemical content that's actually...
Whether the system is working.
Yeah.
Well, the bedrooms that you have.
So I suspect that that is related to the replacements of control panels up there. Pump's currently running, but we can't just say it's on the control panels at this.
Well, this is second letter in February.
Yeah, this is, we fought back, this is anoxid pumps, mixes, panels, sand filters, not working, not working correctly.
You put us in a bit of a bind. Does that make sense? Is there any chance, are you at, how many bedrooms do you have in the two combined?
158.
Okay, there, it's not any other number. It's exactly at 158. I'm just saying, if there was 157, maybe you could, but you don't have any leeway, right?
Correct. I believe that we were, that we built the number of bedrooms, that we did, the number of bedrooms that we were limited to was set because that was how many we had planned to build, and there wasn't a deviation to that. That's my understanding of that.
Madam Chairwoman, that is standard practice. So the standard practice is you apply for a wastewater treatment facility based on the number of bedrooms that you are going to build. DEP is not in the, they do not give people leeway. They don't, there's no such thing as, as a, you know, buffer. So we're gonna permit you for 160 bedrooms, but you're only gonna build 155. That's not how these permits are. The permits are based on the number of bedrooms that are, that are built. So it, that seems, that seems like that's the realistic count, is 158.
What do you think would be the remedy for us? I mean, do you see the issue that we're facing?
I do.
We have at least two letters from DEP saying that you're in noncompliance, that the well water is being polluted by the septic system, you know, they're finding nitrogen in it. What do you think we should do?
My, my thought on this, I know when we first were built, our, our system, we did have a little bit of a rocky start. We had a, a management company that didn't end up being as up to snuff as we needed it to be. So it took us a little while to get, get going. We have a management company now that is highly effective, they have a great reputation, and DEP was actually very happy that we ended up bringing them on. And they've been very good about when anything's corrected, very quickly when anything is going at all out of whack. I do apologize that we didn't anticipate this, and that we should have been more informed about this coming here. But my expectation is that this is an issue that is actually already in the process of being corrected, and that it will be corrected very quickly. That being said, I do understand that it is very difficult for you guys to consider making a decision tonight, given the information that you have right now. So I'm not sure what to suggest at this point.
Maybe council can give us some guidance as to...
So unfortunately, you only have, you only, the board only has a few options, and the first option would be to deny the modification because of the fact that the, that DEP has not given written approval to increase by one bedroom, which would be required. And it would particularly, it's required pursuant to the, pursuant to the decision for the actual comprehensive permit. But also, I would just wanna remind this board what we just went through with well water and septic, and so we have to remember that this town has private septic and private water. There is no municipal water, no municipal septic. And so I think that's your first option, would be just to deny it. A denial does not mean that it cannot be reapplied for once DEP approves it in writing, and, and this board and the Board of Health are satisfied with that. And then, I, I mean, the only other, the only other possibility would be to continue this, but it would have to be...
This isn't gonna be resolved.
It's not. So...
In order for DEP to give a letter, I, this is what I was trying to work on in my mind, when, you know, the consideration was given to continuing a subject to. But I mean, I don't know how long they'd want a good test before...
Right, and you can't, you could not do, you could not do subject to because of the fact that her permit will, could run out before DEP acts. So this isn't a situation where, like you said, this isn't a situation where you're built, you, you give a comprehensive permit with a whole bunch of conditions, and once you break ground, you are exercising that permit. And so therefore, it's not subject to lapsing, it's not subject to expiring, because you are actually exercising the permit. Here, there would be no exercise of the permit. She would just be sitting there waiting for the mail to come, for DEP to act, and unfortunately, none of us can predict when they would act. And so it's not, it really wouldn't be a possibility in this situation where the whole, where the whole complex is built out.
Any of my colleagues have any comments?
I have a question. Right now, we're just looking at the comprehensive permit for additional bedrooms, and not looking at the in-law apartment part of it.
That's correct. This had, this would have to be decided before the in-law apartment could be applied for it. At this point, it's not even applied for.
Okay, so, and we're talking about a bedroom for someone who's always lived in the building.
Yes, that's true.
What has she been doing to DEP since 2009?
Right, so for several years, when the kids were little, she lived in one of the bedrooms in the upper floors. And after the kids got a little bit older, well, the whole, so it's a very complicated situation. Life can get like that sometimes. I don't know how much of the story you guys want. But originally, she was going to be in her own unit, and unfortunately, circumstances changed such that that was not possible anymore. And she needed to, to move in with us. And so we ended up having her in with us in one of the bedrooms in our three-bedroom space. The kids got older, and it got much more difficult, and we tried to work with the town in order to finish our walkout basement, so that we could expand our living space enough to have a little bit more room. And we worked with the building inspector at the time, and we had the space permitted, and we were given an occupancy permit, and the new building inspector revoked it because he disagreed with the use, and his reasons were valid and sound.
Excuse me?
There's, there's more, like you said, this is a simplification.
You've gotta bring, excuse me, to finish your basement so you could have more space in the building, okay?
Yeah.
And then the next building inspector revoked it, I mean, I don't know how that could happen.
So we went through this whole, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna get into more details, okay? So originally, we wanted to do an in-law apartment, full-blown, the whole thing, and we asked about that, and we were told that there was no possible way that that would be at all allowable, because we would have to, and I don't even remember all of the circumstances that surrounded this, but, and even who told us this, but we were told that we would have to have a second means of egress out of the walkout basement, and that would involve like blasting and putting in a whole different...
Did the, was there downstairs, was there another bathroom in there?
Not at the time. So that was part of the whole building permit that we ended up applying for and being granted. So, so that was what we had originally gone to the current building inspector with, and we worked with him to scale that back, and to really just expand it as extra living space with enough amenities down there that she would be pretty comfortable. We thought we were doing it right, because we were working with the building inspector. We did...
Well, if you had a building permit for, I mean, like, if you put in any plumbing or anything, you need, you know, a plant, so you put in for all those permits?
Yes, we did.
At the same time?
Yep.
Everything was all signed off on, everything was all written, and then included the bathroom.
The only change that we made after the fact, which is the part that we screwed up on, and is the part that we did wrong, that we totally owned, is that we put in a stove after the fact. That's what we did. And that, that, and I, I mean, the perspective of the, the new building inspector, I mean, he's, he's, he's within his rights to be saying what he's saying, he's absolutely within his rights. And if I had known now, what I know then, he would have done this differently. Our intent was not to do this illegally or to do things like we did.
Well, that's all right under the dam, and now we're trying to...
And we're trying to make it right.
A resolution.
Yeah.
Do you understand, given town council statements, where we are?
Absolutely.
Number one, what I'm hearing from our council is that we could refuse this...
Yep.
And wait until DEP is willing to sign off on it, and you could reapply.
Yeah.
Or you're asking us, you know, continue it, but we don't know, it could be six months, it could be eight months, it could be a year, okay? And that is not reasonable if it were pending, okay? You don't have what we would need if we were to consider approving it, and that is a DEP letter saying that your system is not able to handle an additional bedroom. And in quite honestly, from the correspondence that I've seen, you're not gonna get that in any big hurry.
Could, could we consider maybe continuing it for one month to see if we could get a letter like that? I mean, it's worth asking the question.
Have the repairs been made? You seem not to know that there was anything wrong.
So I'd like to see if it knows how to find, most of the repairs were done equal to six. It takes a while for a system kind of adjust as we change the pump schedules, so I'll have to see by the name what it looks like, and generally takes some tuning to get the system back in that good balance.
But they're gonna require testing over a period of six months or something in order to make sure that the system's working. They're not gonna tell you five days after you, you know, I mean, it's sort of like you put whatever kind of chemical you need to resolve the immediate issue. And sure, you get a great test, but it's gotta be over time.
Is, is, is the letter that you're asking for, is that essentially the amendment, the permit amendment, or is it...
Yes.
It is, okay. Okay, I see what you're saying, all right. All right, I was thinking, or more, do you like, you know, assuming everything is okay...
It has to actually be an official permit amendment saying, so you have, I think actually you supplied it, the...
DEP letter originally.
The DEP original, the original wastewater treatment...
The package, yes.
Yeah. So you would need that exact letter, but it would now say 159.
Okay.
In fact, on the top, they usually just put amendment. But yeah, that's...
So it's that M dash letter?
Do you folks understand the position that we're in?
Yeah. If they're, just so that I understand how substantial changes work, then if a continuous happens, does a public notice or notification need to go out at every meeting?
No.
Okay. So that's the only other thing that I can think of that might make it helpful to us not to deny it now, to allow it to continue for a little while?
To find a little while.
Maybe three months? Is that too much? I'll take two months, I'll take one month, just chance.
The only way you could do three months is if, have you guys set a schedule? I mean, most, most boards don't set schedules out that far, because why, you don't wanna leave unless you have petitions that you have to have done.
Quite frankly, I think you're looking at six or eight months minimum, if they've come out and if they've done testing. My guess, I'm not, I'm not eager...
Could I, could I just ask you a question?
Sure.
Did you, did you file, did you file something official with DEP, or did you just speak with someone?
SWSS, our management company, is the one who interacts with DEP.
So make sure that they actually filed an application for an amendment, and they didn't just speak with somebody about it, and then they thought they were all set because with DEP, you're really not all set unless you have something that you can track. So just make sure they actually filed an application, and if they didn't file one quickly to get things started, because things aren't started unless an application is actually filed. And the thing is, is that I think as trustees, you probably would have had to sign something, so they might not have actually filed officially for the amendment. So I would just make sure that's done to get it.
Have we ever actually amended this before?
No, you haven't. It's the same, it's 158 bedrooms, which is the permit, the original permit. So there has been no amendment to this, so that's...
What you're saying makes a lot of sense.
So it's just like filing for a new permit, you have to start with the application process, so...
She's just trying to tell me what you need to do because...
Yeah, I appreciate that.
Six or eight months from now, you'd be sitting here and saying...
Waiting for a call back, and you'll never get one.
Okay. I've been a Sawyer Hill trustee for like eight years, and I know you've been on this ever since, and I've learned an awful lot in that time, but this is not something that...
And they are, DEP has gone pretty, I don't wanna say techno, because they're not that funny, but they, they might have, you know, you might be able, the management company might have been able to do this online, I don't know, but you do wanna confirm with them that they filed the correct paperwork.
Do you remember what they told you, because I know you made the request.
And you're David Ritchie, why, why is this addressed to you? What's your role?
So I'm one trustee, so I would deal mostly with the management company, we have one process.
And so it seems like this is the first time you saw this document today?
It is, of course.
Okay.
This was dated February 28th, and it was addressed to you. And you've never seen it?
Snack a male in the corner of his teeth.
I mean, it's not, you know, my committee there, it's your...
If I could, sure. The applicant has laid out a substantial sum of money to get to this point, and I'm somewhat sympathetic to that. If we deny this tonight, then when they come back, they're gonna re-incur all those costs again. You're gonna have to reapply, just an application fee, and then you have to do the notices and all that. I don't know, there's, I don't know, 70 or 80 people that you have to notify, which certified mail at $4 a pop or whatever it is. Could we offer to at least do a minimum of a 30-day, one month?
Well, my concern is if, if the work was done the 26th of April, there's no way, and I think...
Well, I, yeah, I understand that it's gonna take multiple months, it may take multiple months, but I'd like them to... months, but I'd like them to be comfortable and be able to talk to DEP and make sure that they have all their ducks in a row before we...
Wait, say that again? The repair was done on what date?
April 26th.
Okay, so this letter from Small Water Systems Services, is there a date other than, okay, sampling information was 3/27, all right, because it's dated April 30th, so I just wanted to make sure that they came after the repairs.
I mean, they're there Monday through Friday.
If we granted a one-month continuance, at least they could come back next month and just say, here's where we're at, and they could either withdraw, or we could deny it at that point. I don't think it would be a major issue for the board, one way or another, at least in my viewpoint, and like you said, she's laid out quite a sum of money at this point, and I, and, who knows, DEP may have mailed it today, I don't know, but...
They have to come back and do testing, they just...
But they could talk to DEP and find out what the status of all that is, and at least they would know what's going on at that point with DEP, they'd know the questions to ask.
If the board is comfortable with that, that would be appreciated, and I do definitely appreciate that.
Even though you know that the judges are that probably next month will be the end?
Yeah, yeah, and we'll, I mean, we'll, we'll reapply as we need to, it is what it is. One thing, I do have a question about the abudders list. I think because of the, just the length of it, there were several abudders that were listed multiple times, and I sent out a letter multiple times, because I wanted to be sure I was doing everything, but if, if they're the same entities listed, can I do one?
I suggest you talk to the assessors, you bring the list, and you tell them, look, this is a duplicate, this is a duplicate, this is a duplicate, so that if you need to use the list again, it would be up to them to say whether or not it is in fact the same person. Maybe it's an in-law apartment, and it's the same address, okay, but it's two different people?
Two different people have to go, they have to get two different...
Exactly.
No, it was mostly town and, and town entities, so commissions...
Conservation commission?
Yeah, conservation commission and things like that.
Sudbury?
Yeah.
I don't think, I mean, you sent multiples to the conservation commission?
Yep, I wanted to be sure that I was doing everything correctly. I think they got six, I think, which is, I mean, it's in the, in the long scheme of things, that's peanuts, but, you know...
That is something that if you have to send six letters to the conservation commission, then I would say, talk to the assessors and say, can we modify this list?
Okay.
What's the feeling of the rest of the board members? Are you available, Amy?
Do you have a meeting scheduled? Do you have hearings?
We, we will be meeting the second Wednesday of next month.
June 12th.
And could you have, are you, you're speaking for the board trustees, right?
Yeah.
Do we want to have her sign up paper saying that it's at her request?
Yes, definitely. The 180 days are starting today, the opening of this...
So, we need a letter from you saying, and that you, you know, that you are requesting the extension, and the extension of the 180-day limit?
Yep.
Yep.
Is that something we can cancel up quickly?
Do you have a piece of paper?
I think Lee's got something for you. Well, this is, this is what I'm, I'm suggesting, because I'm very leery of it, because I think you're just, you're in for heartache, okay? You need to go beat down the doors of DEP, or talk to whomever you need to talk to, and you need to tell, ask them honestly how long this is gonna take, how many tests have to be done before they'll be secure.
Okay.
I would suggest that, you know, extending it a month is fine, but I think you're gonna find that they're gonna want some testing done over time before they increase the number of the bedrooms, if they do, you know, I, historically, I would check and see how many times you've been in non-compliance, because I think that'll enter into it too. You know, if you, you know, had an issue at the beginning, and then you had an issue at three or five years, and then you had an issue with seven years, and then you had an issue now, I think they'll be less likely to, but that's just my supposition, okay? Okay, just, I guess we have a general sense of the members on the board. Let's see, you're not voting, we've got one, two, three, four, five, six, you're junior member, are you? Okay. So, we've got Sue, and Ginny, myself, and Denny, and Jim. Would someone key it, all right, first of all, you're making a formal request, are you?
Yes, I am.
And the request is?
To please extend the, do we have a continuance?
I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
You're requesting a continuance.
I'm requesting a continuance.
To June 12th.
I would make a motion that we continue this hearing until June 12th at 7:00 PM.
We don't have anything else on the agenda, do we, Leanne? We have a motion in a second. Okay, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? All those not speaking? Okay. So, we will see you here again. I would only ask you that you get the facts, because I cannot see why we would continue it again, unless they tell you, we need two weeks, all right? Does that make sense to you?
It does, yeah. I really appreciate it.
I'm just curious, everybody here in support of this, or is anybody speaking?
They're all members of the community.
They were all meeting last night.
Is there anybody here that's not part of the Sawyer Hill? Kevin? I see you.
Okay, so, I, I will entertain a motion to, or would we already do that? To continue it to the 12th, right?
We did that.
Okay. And that will close the hearing for this evening. Please don't be too disappointed, I'm just, I'm concerned for you guys, this is not going to be looking. You're welcome to stay.
I just wanted to bring up one thing, is that in this DHCD letter that she gave us...
Yes.
DHCD didn't even cite their own regulations correctly. It's supposed to be 76 CMR 5605, and they put 5005. Just goes to my health these days, opinion of DHCD.
So noted.
Thank you.
I feel, I feel bad, but we know where this is all going.
There never is. I, I would put money on the fact that they probably, an application probably hasn't been filed, they need, you have to hire an engineer, so a management company can't just file an application, usually they have to hire an engineer, so, I would agree.
Well, thank you for giving the guidance along, along the lines of that they need to get it filed, okay?
Not where she's standing here every month.
We love you.
All right.
We'll see you next month.
Yes, I'll be here next month.
I was in Harwich last night at a town meeting, it ended at 1:00 AM.
Yeah, but it's over.
But it's a beautiful place, isn't it?
Yours is over, right?
Yeah, last night, yeah.
Went two nights.
Yeah, Harwich went two nights also.
We did Mary Juana once.
I heard, I've seen articles.
It only took one.
I've been here last year, I was here every single one. It was a monthly drive.
Okay, we have minutes, do we not?
I miss you when I... We do. April 10th and April 18th.
I know, I know, we accept the minutes, so...
Bye, have a nice drive. Bye-bye.
Did he get his permit? Your son at the registry?
We did, we, it wasn't bad, maybe a half hour, he might, he has a learner's permit, it's paper, it went through the wash. Do you have to do all that, you have to do like, it's a lot, 18 driving lessons, and it's with a school, but every time he gets in the car, they check it, he had to drive a lesson that night, so he had to drop everything, go to the registry, call in the...
How are you?
I'm good, how are you?
Good.
And you know what's right at the registry, you're, the tape's still on.
Oh, okay. Used to be at a town meeting.
Yes.
It's wonderful, but it's...
You barely survived last night.
I ate tough in Harwich. It's over.
It was the April 18th, that short meeting we had. It was just key.
Motion to accept the meeting, the minutes of the meeting.
Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
There were two, there were two properties. That's all I got.
Okay, anyone have anything else?
No.
We got the zoning act, you and I turned in our, and I turned in the postage. I guess we're done, we'll meet you next month at 7:00. Yeah, did you wanna?
I was just mainly observing.
Please come down front soon.
I was just mainly observing.
Oh, okay, that's fine.
I did earlier have a question about the process, if...
Yes.
If the zoning is just not, is not the same as what we're proposing for a certain property, what the process would be, so it's more of a general question.
But that's building inspector, you know, I think he would have to tell you what you can and can't do within a given district. Well, it depends, is it a home-based contracting business? Well, maybe even though it's resident, you know, but he needs to, he needs to go to the building inspector, tell him we have a location, and he's gonna have to go to the inspector and tell him what he needs to do. Do you have an interest in a property?
Yes.
Do you have a purchase and sale?
Correct.
Is it subject to?
Subject, yeah.
I'd go tomorrow.
He's not gonna be there tomorrow. He's got a part, part-time ultimate inspector, and he's not gonna be in until next Tuesday. Suggested he send an email.
Next Tuesday, I'd be there.
Now, how far in advance should I apply to your board if I need to see you?
You can stop, the town clerk is here tonight, she has a one-pager. I think you're anticipating that you're gonna need to have a special permit or something, is that what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Have you done something silly, like read the bylaws?
I did look at the bylaws, I looked at the section where it talks about zoning and what's permitted in commercial village, it's, for me, it looks a little bit of a gray area about what we, what we can, what we can do there, and I just wanted to make sure that we are permitted to operate a business out of that location. The location is...
It would depend on what kind of business, as you can see, they usually list the kinds of business, but again, that determination would be made by the building inspector. How long do you have before you have to exercise your purchase and sale?
Well, we're, we're within the agreement right now, but depending on if we need to see the board next June, as it says, June 12th, right?
If you were going to be on the hearing list for next month, you would have to apply tonight.
I would have to apply tonight to be on the hearing for June 12th.
Yeah, the, the thing is that, first of all, you, you make application, and then we give you what will be a hearing notice, and then at least two weeks prior, you have to notify all of the abudders determined by the assessors, and I have no idea what this hearing would be for, and you have to post it in a newspaper, and usually, you can't get it in the newspaper, so there's backup time.
All right, so if I were to apply, I would have to do it today, that's what you're saying?
Yeah, pretty much, right? Or would it be next Wednesday?
Yes.
I'd have to check my, what's forward is from. It's actually next Wednesday.
Okay, so you have to next month, so you can see him Tuesday, and you need to apply on Wednesday. So, if you, if you need something, pick up the forms from the town clerk and take them with you, so you can get them now, you would...
And again, I was just trying to clarify, do you think I need to see the planning board or something like this?
Should we keep Simon?
What do you think, Tim, does he need to see the planning board?
Oh, you're Tim. I stopped by your farm this morning, this afternoon, left my card, I actually wanted to chat with you, see...
So, it never does any harm to, it's always a good idea to see the planning board, they're happy to talk to people.
Yeah.
When do you next meet?
We meet the 14th, it's that Tuesday next week.
So, you're gonna have a busy Tuesday.
That's okay, it's usually, that's the process for you.
They're nice people.
We have to race against the clock.
The, the town clerk will give you the chairman of the planning board's email address, and you can get in touch with him and ask to be put on the agenda.
Okay, and would I be able to just come in and ask questions?
He's gonna give you a, yeah, we're real mellow compared to the rest of these authority people, so it's pretty simple.
They have various remaining chats.
Yeah, really. Making fun of our name tags, the whole thing.
It's related to the property, which I think used to be Spooky World in the past, and I think you're next to it as well.
Yeah.
So, we, we just want to make sure that we can operate out of that location, I know there's a lot of activity that happened in the last few years, going back and forth with some ideas, so I wasn't sure what has been discussed, what hasn't been discussed, what the town likes to see there, and we looked at it, it looks pretty rundown.
Where is this?
Spooky World.
Yeah, so we just wanted to make sure that we, we can actually operate out of it
before we invest money in it.
Is this gonna be a marijuana growth facility?
No, we're, we're, we're a design company, outdoor design company, so, so we, we do mainly design for swimming pools, outdoor living, patios, things like that, so, and design management company. So, we like the idea of being there, because we currently do have operations out of Berlin, our main office is in Hudson, but we, we like being here in Berlin, we like the location, it's, it's very...
So, that's an ideal business location down there?
So, it would be ideal for us, we like the idea, we like the location, but it, that needs everything. The house has been vandalized, the warehouse has been vandalized, it needs pretty much everything, so before we invest a lot of money in it, we need to make sure that the town is okay with us operating out of that location, because we know that there are some, the zoning is very specific, but when I, when I looked at the zoning, it doesn't specify a design company that designed swimming pools and patios and things like that, so I just wanna make sure that we, we can do that.
Do you have outside, well, I get into, you know...
I know, I was gonna say, do we have...
Have outside storage. Leanne?
Yes.
Could you give him an email or something that he could send? Could you give him an email or something that he could send you? Okay. And then you're going to talk to the town clerk and get a list of what you need to do if you need to file for special permits. You're going to get from the town clerk also the email address of the chairman because Mr. Wheeler is not the chairman and he doesn't want to be the chairman. For us to ask to be on the agenda for Tuesday, the 14th.
Sounds good. Well, thank you very much. Thanks for your time.
And you don't live in town, do you?
I do.
Where do you live?
I live on Dudley Road.
Wait, which end?
If you.
The beginning, not the.
Any, anyone who just comes to listen. We're always looking for another member of the board here, so. Anyone who enjoys listening.
I do enjoy listening. I don't know if I can do your job, but. No, I've been in Berlin since 2008 and I lived in.
You realize by town standards, that's not a long time.
I do understand that. So I'm still a newbie, but when I moved to Dudley Road, that big development wasn't built yet. It was just a dead end. But I did buy that old rundown house. The Elsa Brooks. And I renovated and last couple of years I made additional on it. So it's very pretty right now. And I live there with my family. I'm very happy here.
They just got some conservation land last night in Dudley Road, right? Or no, the town took it.
Yeah, the town, yeah.
Where?
On Dudley Road.
The other side?
Well, it's listed here.
Yeah, but it doesn't say.
No, it said the size of them.
Yeah, they're tiny little.
They're very small.
Oh, okay.
Well, to them, a tiny little poster stamps is a half acre, okay?
Yeah, but that's even smaller than that.
Was it?
These are tiny, right there.
It's off a river, I think.
Coming in the other way.
Yeah, off a river road.
Oh, off the river road, that was side then, yeah. There's, I'm on the road off of Marlborough Road. But my property has about four acres of wetland, so in the back. It's pretty private.
Nice.
Okay.
Well, thank you. Perhaps we'll get to see you again. We hope not.
Thank you very much for your time.
So glad.
Thank you.
When is that dinner? It's the 13th.
The 13th.
It's a Thursday.
13th of June or something.
So we'll be here and then the following night we will be in.
Oh, we're going with the bus?
Okay, I'll entertain a march into a turn. I'll entertain a march into a turn.
So moved.
All those in favor, aye? Don't let it go anywhere. All those opposed? It's a unanimous voting, turn.